We'll call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Dozier, do we have a call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Mouswee, Councilmember Conchris present, Councilmember Gilliam present, Councilmember Brennenbaum present, Councilmember Crummel, and Mayor Corchin yet.
Thank you. This time will we all rise, join me in a moment of silence, and then join me in the pledge, Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could get Coach Jones and guys to come up here. Boys, I am going to be on the board. Whereas the Alito High School football team brought home their 12th state championship in 2023, the most beating high school in the state, Texas, their 11th since 2009, and their field in the last six years. Whereas head coach Rocky Jones launched his first state championship at the helm of Bearcat Football, continuing a legacy of greatness for the Bearcat Football Team. Whereas the Bearcats show strength and hard work on the offensive field with reliable players and two managers trainers being named TSACA Academic All-Safety Team in addition to their other accomplishments. Whereas the city of Willow Park is honored to be the largest city in the Alito Independent School District and the home of many of these exceptional and young players. Now therefore, I, Doyle Moss, ask you to join me in recognizing the hard work of these players, the coaching staff, and the assorted trainers, labor chair leaders, and dance team who excelled this season and made us proud to be a part of such an exciting time. I would also insist that we extend our grati- congratulations to the football team and the Alito Independent School District as well. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Come on. No, you gotta get in there. All right. Thank you.
Hold on. Need one more, Rick?
Yeah, I do.
I'm going to be looking over at Nate. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Where y'all going to school? I know you're going to Ole Miss. You're going to be an engineer. Awesome.
Colorado School of Mines.
Colorado School of Mines.
Golden State.
Good deal. Good deal.
Alex has looked for a school to go play at. He's got several offers he's decided on.
Awesome.
Good luck to you.
Awesome. Well, good luck to you guys. Come see me in about four years for a job.
First item is to approve the council meeting minutes of December the 12th, 2023. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting held on December 12th, 2023.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations, guys.
Item number three, to consider all matter incident and related to the issuance and sale of the City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2024, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of such certificates in the amount not to exceed $4 million to finance cost of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improving wastewater system properties or facilities, including the acquisition of land and rights of way therefore and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and the finance thereof. Mr. Grimes.
Yes. Eric Mahaw with Hilltop Securities has been our FA on this. We just sold the bonds this morning, and I'll steal some of his thunder. I think we had a final closing of 3.92. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And when Mr. Mahaw was here in November and did the modeling, it was around a four and a half-ish?
A little above four and a half, what we were looking at.
And so it was a little bit less than what we thought when we initially came to council with this. So I kind of took your thunder away, but I'll let you get into the weeds a little bit.
No, that's perfectly fine. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The item before you tonight is an ordinance to approve sale of the certificates. Few months back, the council put in place not to exceed amount of $4 million. Today, the certificates priced out in the market, on the cover page, just highlighted a few things if you have the packet. Prior to the bond sale or the certificate sale, we went through the bond rating process. The city's bond rating of AA was affirmed. No changes there. Good to see.
Do they have the packet in front of them? Crystal, did you make copies?
Of the...
The pricing?
No.
Okay. I thought we talked about that today.
My apologies.
No, I thought...
I can just go through the highlights.
Okay. I'm sorry, Leah.
There's an electronic copy floating around you can have for your reference, but all the deal points are included in the actual ordinance itself. The ordinance in the council's packet had some blanks in it. Based on this morning's pricing, those blanks have been filled in. So the ordinance is the document the council will be acting on tonight. As Mr. Grimes mentioned, today, the interest rate came in at 3.92%. This will fund 4 million to the city's project fund. The certificate sold at a premium. We can take the premium dollars, pay all the financing costs, and so the actual principal amount that the city will repay is 3.96 million. So you'll pay back 3.96 million in principal, but that will produce 4 million to the project fund. So we have that scheduled for February 7th. That will be the date that the funds will be delivered to the city. The average annual payments came in at right around $240,000 a year. And then going back a few months, as Mr. Grimes mentioned, we were estimating around $280,000 a few months back, but 240,000 are the final payments going forward. So it was very good to see that. The market has certainly moved in our favor. Ever since November, I think interest rates have started to tail back a little bit. I think there's thoughts of inflation cooling and things like that. So this is locked in at 3.92. I will say, we went back for the city hall project, just to put in perspective, that was at a 4.37. So we came in a little better than that, just mainly given the market. And then in the copy of the packet, we have a copy of that rating report of AA, like I mentioned. So there's really no changes there. So everything went very well today. There was a lot of demand. I was telling Mr. Grimes over the weekend, we get a report of all the investors that have accessed, looked at the ability to buy the certificates, and I think there was over 200 different investors that were looking at it throughout the weekend. And so very good this morning, lots of orders, and I feel like it's a good transaction for the city to come in under that 4%. We'll have the ability to pay these certificates off early, starting in 2034. Refinance or pay them off early if we choose to do that, starting at that time. So that's embedded in the ordinance itself.
Thanks, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Do we have a motion, please?
We need to read the caption.
I can read the caption. I'll make a motion and I'll read the caption.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as read by Crystal. Yeah.
Ordinance number 893-24, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2024, providing for the payment of said certificates of obligation by the levy and ad��on tax upon all taxable property within the city and pledge of the surplus net revenues derived from the operation of the city's combined waterworks and sewer system, providing the terms and conditions of such certificates and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of said certificates, including the approval of execution of a paying agent, registered agreement, purchase agreement, and the approval of distribution of the official statement and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to adopt an ordinance annexing a portion of East Bankhead Highway and approving a service plan for the annexed property, such annexed property to be described as follows: being 7,815 feet, more or less, of East Bankhead Highway, a variable width right-of-way out of the following surveys and abstracts in Parker County, Texas, ING NRR Company Survey, Abstract Number 1821, John Cole Survey, Abstract Number 218, James Oxer Survey, Abstract 1029, A.J. Hood Survey, Abstract Number 2587, and Eliza Oxer Survey, Abstract 1031, containing approximately 10.95 acres of land. Mr. Grimes.
Yes. Pat, you want to, so we don't fumble this one?
Yes. Well, basically, this is allowing us, as y'all recall, Mr. The Haney's petition the city for annexation to get to them, we have to annex this portion of Bankhead under the new law that allows us to do this. That's what procedure we're following. And so that's the ordinance we have to connect the current city limits of Willow Park with the Haney property. And so this is, I did notice, and I want to bring out, would ask that you amend the service plan I provided in there, that we would be providing the fire suppression services. So that obviously will be the Parker County Emergency Services District. We need to amend it in that respect, but that is, this first annexation is the road that gets to the Haney property. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
And we have a recommended motion at the bottom of page four. Is that correct?
Yes. And I would amend the service plan and then to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Say that again?
First of all, I move to amend the service plan as discussed by the city attorney.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
And now you now do the motion, the recommended motion there.
I make a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing a portion of East Bankhead Highway and approving a service plan as amended for the annexed property, such annexed property to be described as follows: being 7,815 feet, more or less, of East Bankhead Highway, a variable width right-of-way out of the following surveys and abstracts in Parker County, Texas, ING NRR Survey, Abstract Number 1821, John Cole Survey, Abstract Number 218, Jane Oxer Survey, Abstract Number 1029, A.J. Hood Survey, Abstract Number 2587, and Eliza Oxer Survey, Abstract Number 1031, containing approximately 10.95 acres of land.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to adopt an ordinance annexing property on approximately 31.247 acre tract of land owned by Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney, and approving a service agreement for the annexed property, such annexed property to be described as follows: being a tract of land situated in the Eliza Oxer Survey, Abstract Number 1031, Parker County, Texas, and being all of tracks one through three as described by the deed to Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney as recorded in document number 202200494. Deed records, Parker County, Texas, DRPCT, containing approximately 31.247 acres of land. Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Chelsor.
This, as you recall, the city entered into a developer's agreement with the Haney's to develop this tract of land. They submitted to us as a condition of that agreement, a petition for annexation and an agreed service agreement. And that's what you have before you, and so the staff recommends that you adopt this ordinance annexing the property. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing property and approximately 31.247 acre tract of land owned by Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney, and approving a service agreement for the annexed property. Such annexed property to be described as follows: being a tract of land situated in the Eliza Oxer Survey, Abstract Number 1031, Parker County, Texas, and being all of tracks one through three as described by deed to Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney as recorded in document number 202200494. Deed records, Parker County, Texas, DRPCT, containing approximately 31.247 acres of land.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a lease agreement between the City of Willow Park and Parker County ESD-1 for the use of the public safety building located at 101 Stagecoach.
Yes. So this is the portion of the PSB that is being utilized by the ESD, and I want to get rid of saying that acronym at some point because it just gets confusing, but the Emergency Services District is utilizing the former fire department area. We had discussed a year ago about doing a lease with them as part of a transition. We now have this lease ready to go. The language is the usual and customary that you would find in any other lease, but as I said in the memo, the two points, 24-month period with an option to extend. The first 24 months, the lease would be 7,500 a month or 90,000 per year. If it was to be extended, it'd go up to 78, 75, or 94,500 a year. I had a discussion with Chief Watson about the lease. They already have this in their budget, so they knew this was coming. They haven't, we sent them the lease, you sent it to me Thursday? When I got it, I sent it to Chief Watson. I have not had any feedback from him on that yet, but I don't anticipate there to be any issues. And so I would recommend that you guys enter into a lease agreement with ESD-1.
All right, thank you. We have a suggested motion on the page here.
Yep. I move that the City of Willow Park enter into a lease agreement with ESD-1 under the terms and conditions as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any other, excuse me, questions or discussion?
So questions, so we have sufficient space for police department?
Yes, sir.
Going forward, covering all this lease period and more?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The three main offices? The three...
Or the three front administrative offices?
For fire? Yeah. Yeah, that's part of this lease. But I don't know if they're utilizing it, but they're paying for the space.
Right, right.
Essentially, chief, it's, as layman's terms, it's everything from the training room back to the base, correct?
Yes, from the training room, lobby area, to the left side.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a contract with Parker County for 2024 general election services.
Mayor, Council, and each yearly contract with Parker County for our elections. I spoke with, I've been corresponding with Cricket over at Parker County. We, if we end up having to hold an election this year, because it is a primary year, if they have enough equipment, we can have, this city hall can be an election location for Election Day only. If she has enough equipment, then we will have to more than likely recruit some election workers. Obviously, they will provide an election judge for this location, but we might have to do a little bit of work, and it's going to be at an extra cost to the city to have City Hall a polling place for Election Day. So she is requiring this contract to be approved and submitted to them by the 5th of February. So that's why this is being presented to you at this meeting and not the next.
So we will not be a polling place for the primaries? I know, it's irrelevant to this.
Correct.
So this is only, you're speaking for only the May 5th?
For our general election.
For our general election.
If we end up having an election, I know that there were some citizens that were wanting City Hall to be a polling place, but because it's a primary, she's really concerned about having enough equipment.
Okay. So... Do you know when the runoff for the primary election would be?
She did tell me that, and it's on my desk.
Okay. I was going to say, potentially overlaps with some of the early voting?
Yes. Yeah. And that was her concern, was the early voting. It was more early voting than Election Day, but she says, once we get there, then we can have further discussion about it and about how much it's going to be and if we're going to need to recruit our own workers.
Okay.
So staff's recommendation is to approve the contract for the 2024 general election.
Okay. Any questions for Crystal or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Parker County for 2024 general election services.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
And just so everybody, maybe online or in here who doesn't see it, the total approximate amount is $3,695, so we're not talking about a huge amount, so.
That's...
To hold an election.
To hold the election.
To hold the election, if we got there.
And if we do, it'd be an additional, be an additional cost to have City Hall as a polling place. Don't know what that price is going to be until we get there. So...
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to adopt an ordinance ordering the May 4th, 2024 general election.
Mayor, Council, it's that time of year, the first day to file for place on ballot is going to be next Wednesday at 8:00 a.m., and this, this election, we will be electing Councilmember places three, four, and five. And we need to order the election per Texas Local Government Code, election code. And so I ask, I'm requesting that we can go ahead and approve, adopt this ordinance ordering the election, so we can move forward.
Okay.
Also, any, all the election information regarding this election is already on our website, and it's been on our website.
Is this the recommendation we need to read?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance ordering a general municipal election to be held on May 4th, 2024, for the purpose of electing certain municipal officers for the City of Willow Park, specifically city council members for place number three, place number four, and place number five, designating a polling place within the municipal limits, appointing a presiding election judge, and alternate presiding election judge, establishing other procedures for the conduct of the election, providing a severability clause, providing for publication of notice, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a professional services agreement with Cultivate Real Estate Services for appraisal services for the Kingsgate Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Yes. So as many have asked, the Kingsgate, we finished the Kingsgate Street project. The Kingsgate Bridge is actually a Tech Dot project. A very quick summation is, we did matching, a matching project, there was a drainage project on Meadows Place that we did, I believe, in 2019, and we're in 2024, for those keeping score. We provided our match, and Tech Dot is almost prepared to start the Kingsgate Bridge Replacement Project. And when I say almost, we're talking 26?
25?
Oh, wow.
23.
October of '25, right?
August.
August, so let's just call it, let's just, this is Tech Dot time. We'll call it January of '26. Part of that is, we're going to have to require some right-of-way, some on the west side and some on the east side. Nothing more than maybe a 10 or 15-foot strip along the bridge, but Tech Dot is requiring us to get not one, but two different appraisers. So one to do the initial appraisal, and then we have to hire another company to do the appraisal review. And so that's what agenda items nine and 10 are. One, you're going to, with the council's motion, on nine, you'll hire Cultivate Real Estate Services to do the initial appraisal, and then on item 10, you would go into agreement with ML&amp;M Realty to review the work of Cultivate Real Estate.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I found this up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, the city council approval of the agreement with Cultivate.
the city council approval of the agreement with Cultivate Real Estate for appraisal services for the Kingsgate Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Do we have a motion for number 10? Well, I need to read it, I guess. To approve a professional services agreement with ML&amp;M Realty Advisors LLC for appraisal review services for the Kingsgate Road Bridge Replacement Project. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with ML&amp;M Realty Advisors for the appraisal review services for the Kingsgate Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve an agreement for professional services with Westwood Professional Services with the Green Ribbon Grant Program. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the contract that was presented to, well, we had a similar contract presented in May to the Parks Board for a proposal for an estimate for professional consultation services by Westwood to assist with landscaping for an application submittal for the 24 Tech Dot Green Ribbon Grant Program. That is an award for up to $400,000 that's reimbursable to the city for beautification of Tech Dot right-of-way. The Parks Board couldn't really make a collective decision on the item, and so we postponed it. And in staff with conversations with Leah, who is our ex officio on the Parks Board, suggested that the city create a full design for all of its rights-of-way on either side of the interstate, so we could phase it, plan it, budget it, and execute it annually as possible with or without the grant. And that way, if we got the grant, that was a bonus. If we didn't, we'd already planned for it anyway, and that would, in collection of beautifying our rights-of-way regardless. The contract presented to the city council is for the expanded professional services of landscaping, architecture, conceptual design for the I-20 Tech Dot North and South Service Roads Rights-of-way within Willow Park's approximate city limits from Tricia Trail through Micus to Micus Road, monument sign designs and location recommendations for along the interstate to identify our city limits, and the application completion and submittal of the 2025 Tech Dot Green Ribbon Grant Program. This design will be divisible into phases, which can be budgeted and completed annually, and may be submitted for annual application for the Tech Dot Grant Ribbon Program. Contract amount is not to exceed $23,600 for professional services, and these funds are currently available within the Parks Budget for professional services. Staff recommends approval and execution of the contract proposal from Westwood Professional Services, Inc., for all services proposed, propose, excuse me, for a total of $23,600 as presented.
That's exciting. Thank you. Any questions for Tony?
Yes. How do we get the grant?
We have to apply for it. There is a--
Can we do it, or does the--
Well, she's going to do it as part of her proposal.
Okay, got it.
Yes. There's a mandatory meeting that you have to go to. That's actually at the end of this month. So signing this contract, she will go ahead and attend. Now, that's for '24. They'll have another in '25. What Tech Dot likes to do is, they like to award grants for areas that are already being renovated. And we figure that that's going to be great timing as far as the Kingsgate Bridge. So by the time we get to that point where we've got all of our design ready, then that should fall right in line with applying for this right before the letting of the Kingsgate Bridge to give us a better opportunity, in theory, for getting that award.
And the same with the exit ramp near Tricia Trail?
Yes.
That's another Tech State dot project? That gives us two really good Tech Dot project opportunities to--
And we can, yeah, and we can stack them because, you know, it'll be, we're just going to keep applying. So as we're going down, that's why it's phased. And that way, as we're planning on doing stuff, it'll probably be on an annual basis that we're going to do this, this, and this, and just keep going around the city until we're, you know, all pretty. And so that way, we'll just keep applying for the grants. So, is the plan. That's long-term, but--
I think it's great. Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tony, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for professional services with Westwood Professional Services Incorporated as presented in the amount not to exceed $23,600.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
This time, we'll go into executive session. We'll be discussing Section 551-71, Consultation with Attorney, Half and Associates Litigation, 551-087, Economic Development Negotiations, 551-071, Consultation with Attorney, Wilkes Development 380 Agreement, 6:31 p.m. Thank you. We're out of executive session at 6:38 p.m. And Pat, you want us to give a quick overview of our action we're taking, please?
Yes, Mayor. The city before you today for a vote is a possible Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between Wilkes Development LLC. And Wilkes Development has indicated to us they want to build the corporate headquarters for Profraq, which is going to be approximately a 60,000-square-foot building. They'll provide up to 200 jobs here in Willow Park. And obviously, will add to our tax base and our sales tax. And it'll be a very good business for the City of Willow Park. We've offered them, in this agreement, incentives. There are Chapter 380 rebates. Basically, what that means is, we'll rebate them up to $300,000 that they've paid the city for building permit fees, inspection fees, and water and sewer tap fees. We'll pay the first 50% of those rebates six months after the issuance of the building permit by the city. And then we'll pay the remainder of the rebates after they have completed the building and built and obtained a CO from the city. And so that is, it's an estimated January 1, 2026 deadline to complete construction of the headquarters building. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Right, any questions? We'll have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Chapter 380 Economic Develop Agreement between the City of Willow Park and Wilkes Development LLC, as outlined by Pat.
Second.
Any question? Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any comments from council tonight, please? Okay. I'd like to thank the citizens of Willow Park for this council. 2023 was a very good year for the City of Willow Park, and it could not have, not been done without this council. I'd like to thank the council for the staff that they provided for the city. I think we have a great staff. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Grimes for putting together a staff in the city. They do a great job, and I think 2024 is going to be an even better year. So, thank you all for serving, and thank you. Mr. Grimes?
I just have one quick note. Tony wanted me to pass this along to everyone. We are now the owners of Kingsgate Park, as it was officially conveyed to the city on December 21st from Wilkes Development. It's approximately 20 acres of parkland, with more coming in the future months and years. It's been a great asset to the city already, and we've already started to work on making it better. And we had that meeting yesterday morning. And so you'll start seeing some park improvements going on over there as well, so.
That's great news.
Larry's actually meeting out there tomorrow with Shadow Johns to map out where the skilled area is going to be for the trail.
For the trail? And we've had discussions about a bathroom. We're going to put, I know that's been asked by a lot of moms. So we're going to be looking for a bathroom to be put in sometime this fiscal year.
That's good for old people, too.
Future of agenda items?
Do what?
Can we do future agenda items?
Sure.
I got two things. One, make sure, we could check with Michelle to make sure that we have everything in place we need for the upcoming freeze. So generator is ready to go, so that way we don't have any interruptions with our water or anything like that. Other one is wastewater update as far as wind, if we can start breaking ground anytime soon. Just kind of update on that one.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?